The August 18th, 2025 work session of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners will come to order. County Clerk, please take the role for the record.
Yes ma'am. Commissioner Henry Mitchell, District 1. Commissioner Whitney Kenner Jones, District 2.
President.
Commissioner Martin Raxton, District 3.
President.
Commissioner Mark Alcarez, Vice Chair.
President.
And Dr. Ramona Jackson Jones, Chairman.
President, thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, did we have anyone sign up for public comment this morning?
Yes ma'am, we did. Before I call you up, I will just remind you, you have three minutes to address the board. Once your three minutes are up, we'll ask you to wrap up your comments. When you reach the podium, please clearly state your name and address and subject matter. Our first speaker is Antoine Benson.
Good morning, speaking to the mic and...
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning, give us your name and your address, please.
Antoine Benson, 3613 Aberdeen Way, Douglasville, Georgia, 30135.
Okay. You here to speak?
On behalf of the CSB. I've known these guys for a number of years. Ray, Cory, Ivy, the whole staff have really supported our movement with the youth program that we have in Douglasville. Me and my brother's foundation, and also Super Sports Elite. Numbers of donation, in-kind donations, and monetary donations as well. You know, I can't say much more, but just keep this thing going. You know, it's really like a unity out there, family oriented. They're here to help, they're here to help. Let's keep the CSB going, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Adrian Benson. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to the next speaker, Michelle Calvo.
Hello everyone, my name is Michelle Calvo. My address is 3090 Water Place Cove, Villarica, Georgia, 30180. And of course, I'm here on behalf of CSB and I'm back. I'm back to do one of a couple of things. Number one, I want to clarify. Our community is in an uproar. They're believing that the tax mileage proposal increase has included the CSB for $5 million. I want to first ask the Commissioners to please address that and let our people know, our citizens, that that's not true. That the CSB is not included in that mileage rate increase. We got to make sure we are informing our citizens because we have a lot of citizens that's concerned about what's happening in our county. My second thing is, I want us to understand the importance of the CSB. Because it's not about red or blue politics, it's about our people and we got to come together. I want you all to understand, there's some things you don't know. Because you're working on several different grants, several different proposals. But we as nonprofit organization, we do the work that nobody pays for. We understand the heart of the citizens. The CSB was funded about $1.2 million from this board before some of you all came on board. To help build programs that we needed in this county. One being the Veterans Village, one being the Youth Innovation, one being One Family Resource. The following year after giving them the money to create these programs. This board defunded them from being able to continue those programs. You can't drop a budget 75% and then tell them to operate three other additional programs that you all decided that you wanted. Without being able to pay these employees. Because I was there and many of our nonprofit organizations within these places trying to do services. That's one thing. If you shut down and let the CSB be shut down, there's a Veterans Village that you all cut the ribbon on, you were proud of. Well, there's 14 to 16 veterans in them particular housing right now. That son was once homeless in those tents. That if you all don't step in to fund this CSB, they lose their home. Right now, CSB is covering over 168 families in the Douglas County area that they are paying with unrestricted funds. Because their funds will cut the following year from this board. It was given to other public health, small private facilities that don't do nowhere near what the CSB do for 10,000 residents. With 10,000 residents and plus that they're serving. If you don't understand, with 40 employees. If you do the research, it takes about 100 to 150 employees to do the work that they are doing with a minimum of $60,000 each person. And their employees are barely getting paid $30,000. If you let this CSB go, our homeless rate will decrease, or will triple. And one day when this place is gone, and I got a lot more I can say. But I need you all to consider letting pride go, ego go, politics go. Let it go and make sure that our county and our citizens are taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Certainly we'll take this matter under advisement. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Our last speaker, Corey Thomas.
Hey, good morning Board Members, how y'all doing this morning?
Good morning.
All right, hey, my name's Corey Thomas and I reside at 2934 Beaumont Road. I'm the co-founder of an organization called Veterans Molding Minds. And I did 23 years in the military and now as I transitioned out. I have identified myself as a Certified Peer Support Specialist in Mental Health and Addictive Disease. Now, what that means to me, that means that what I've noticed by, on this journey. There's a lot of what we call invisible wounds that's happening within our citizens and also our veterans. And this, these invisible wounds falls upon a category called recovery. No one has the, the safe space that they feel comfortable with to recover in a proper manner. Other than the CSB right now here in Douglas County. As we started this journey, I wanted to talk about what proactive versus reactive mean. In support of the CSB and the Community Services Board. And I keep saying CSB, but I should keep saying Community Services Board. That means everyone in this community have to get behind it to make it effective and make it impactful for Douglas County. So, I got a couple of stats that came from the Mental Health America. And if you want to research it and fact-check it, it's MHANational.org. Number one, mental health workforce availability in Georgia ranks 48 out of 51 states. We rank 48 out of 51. Remember, I'm talking about proactive versus reactive. Because if we defund or we do not support the CSB. We will now be going into a reactive state of helping people with mental health illnesses. Number two, adults with mental health uninsured in Georgia, Georgia ranks 48 out of 51. We rank 48 out of 51. When we start talking about adults with mental health uninsured. If you know, the CSB is built to support individuals who don't have insurance. Even though they've assisted a lot of people with insurance. We are developed, we have developed this thing to support the individuals that don't have insurance. And number three, access to care in Georgia ranks 47 out of 51. Now, I know I'm talking about Georgia, but Georgia has these 22 CSBs for a reason. It was so that we would not go into a reactive state in supporting our communities. But as you see, right now, because they have not gotten the support that they need, look where we're ranked statewide. It will come to our community as we start to grow in Douglas County. There will be other issues that will not align with what we need to do for our veterans and also for our citizens. And what does that mean? That means if we don't have the support, it means more incarcerations. So, we're going to get to support the behavioral health support somewhere. It's either we're going to get it by being proactive, supporting the CSB, or we're going to get it on the other side. By incarcerations with a lot of our citizens that may be facing behavioral health issues. Now, as far as our veterans, as of today. I'll just say, thank you for our veterans who's been serving. They have been serving in a peer role to support our community. And we have developed a strong program to support the citizens of Douglas County. Thank you all.
Thank you so much and we appreciate you coming in and we will take this matter under advisement. Madam Clerk, anyone else?
No ma'am.
All right, with that being said, Board Commissioners, certainly we want to move our meeting right along this morning. We have a presentation this morning from the Douglas County Community Service Board. Also wanted to make a note that Charles, Dr. Charles Creighton, who is a Wellstar physician. Who serves as the Board Chair for the Douglas County Public Health. And he serves as the Board Chair for the Community Service Board. Could not be here this morning, however, he wanted to make sure he imparted his thoughts today with us. So, we have a slight video, a small, just a snippet of a video from him this morning prior to the presentation. So, wanted to make you aware of that as well. And it was my understanding someone from DBHDD was invited, however, could not make it. And certainly, I hate that it was not possible this morning. I served on the DBHDD Board and represented the previous administration under Chairman Tom Wertham's administration. And I served as a representative for DBHDD for this county from 2011 to 2014. And we certainly did quite a bit of planning and voiced our opinions and for the consumers and families of this region, which was Region 1. So, with that being said, no further ado, if we please play the video and then you all come forward, Ray Lightford and his team.
Chairwoman Jones and Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak today. If you are seeing this video, don't take my absence as lack of interest. I am serving Douglas County very close by, doing jury duty. Allow me to introduce myself for those of you who don't know me. I am Dr. Charles Creighton and I am a 44-year resident of Douglas County, having moved here in 1981. I am a graduate of Douglas County Comprehensive High School, class of 1985. I worked at Six Flags as a young man and met the woman who would be my wife. And on finishing my medical training in 1996, moved back to Douglas County to start medical practice. My two children went to school in Douglas County. With most recently, my daughter Claire graduating from Chapel Hill High School this last May. I've been Douglas Hospital Medical Staff President and have served and continued to serve in multiple leadership capacities. My mother, who was a longtime county employee in the tag office, still lives in the house I grew up in off of Highway 5. My brother, until very recently, lived off Fairburn Road. Douglas County is my home. In 2014, I was asked to serve on the Board of Health and Community Services Board. Being voted Chair by my peers in 2018. It has been a privilege to serve Douglas County in this capacity, but it has also been a challenge. In the late 2010s, with the shift to fee-for-service billing, we saw the Cobb-Douglas CSB struggle. To make ends meet, services were contracted and consolidated, with most moving back to Cobb County. Some of you may have been fortunate enough to know Ron Wilson. Ron was an active community member and member of the Board. Ron was passionate about the CSB and their mission. And through his guidance, we were able to separate from Cobb and keep serving Douglas County. To that end, the County Commission has been more than generous in your support for the CSB. And that has been crucial and most appreciated. Most recently, Chairwoman Jones, the CSB Leadership Team, and myself met proactively with Commissioner Tanner from DBHDD. The meeting was very productive, but Commissioner Tanner was also very honest. It is the goal of DBHDD to work down the total number of CSBs. And a single county CSB, like Douglas County, is not in their game plan. His advice to us was to work proactively before DBHD had to act. To that end, Ray Lightford has been reaching out to other CSBs. And I know both he and Chairwoman Jones have toured and spoke to others. Their reports back to me were discouraging. Long waits and long drives for the most vulnerable, making Claire difficult if attainable at all. I am not a businessperson, I'm a clinician. I defer to your judgment as to the best course. There is risk in any decision. But, I can assure you, the team you have believes in the mission and has worked tirelessly through hard times, COVID, and more. You now have an option where you retain a great deal of control and are able to shape the service you want for Douglas County. Thank you so much for your time and your service, and I look forward to talking to you further.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you Commissioners, Madam Chair, Administration for having me. We've been looking forward to this opportunity to be able to speak to the community. Kind of debunk some of the things that people may believe and also address currently where we are. And so, we once again appreciate your time and your consideration, as well as those who came out to speak on our behalf. Thank you. So, this is one of our responsibilities based off of Title 37, which is the actual legislation that created Community Services Boards. And it's our public notice of possible dissolution or merger. So, what this means, and I've been with the Community Services Board since 2012. And so, what this actually means is that now we're honestly looking at possible community partners. One of my jobs is to figure out with a merger, how to keep a footprint of services in Douglas County. Because I, mind you, we are public corporations, not state entities. Which means that incumbent organization has the right to remove a certain level of services out of any given area. As long as they keep a foundational footprint for individuals to be able to access it for that county. So, what I wanted to talk about, and I wish it was a little bigger, but I wanted to talk to you about how this came about. So, once again, I mentioned Title 37, Section 2, Subsection 6 is what created Community Services Boards. Prior to that, Community Services Board staff members were part of public health. Once we created that, because the state identified that it had to have its own unique characteristics and service. They created Community Services Boards. Subsequently to that, I don't know if you all familiar with the Allstate Act. The state of Georgia was sued by two women about Millageville because they were held beyond their wills for two years in state hospitals. So, once again, when that took place, they ratified the roles of CSBs to not only deal with behavioral health and developmental disabilities. But also start to look at different community support programs as well. So, we fast forward, 2014. So, on the heels of the Affordable Care Hack being modified that made it illegal not to have insurance. They also changed Community Services Boards from being state employees to public corporations. Which meant that now we basically live by the sweat of our brow and it was based on fee-for-service. So, in this, what happened is, is that the indigent number went down based on the number of people that were forced to have insurance or pay the penalty. At the same time, the need and demand for the community and support went up. Because now you had individuals that could not meet their copays or their deductibles based on what they pulled out of the open marketplace. So, as this is happening, what's shifting is the group of people that we used to be able to bill the state of Georgia for have dissipated. Because the state of Georgia identifies underinsured as individuals who don't have a certain service covered by their insurance. But it also requires a financial application for assistance. So, in short term, what that means is, I can't afford my copay, but when I do the financial application for insurance. I make $60,000 a year, so I don't qualify for any government assistance in that. So, when they modified us, they forgot to change one line. Which means that CSBs were still required to see every citizen regardless of their ability to pay. So, what this did is started to make CSBs go upside down financially across the entire state. Because that was not stricken when they made us a fee-for-service organization and no more grant aid. So, what do Community Services Board provide? We provide core behavioral health services, addiction services such as psychiatry, therapy, addiction counseling, peer support. We do developmental disabilities services as well. Day program as well as housing assistance for individuals who loved ones has passed away. So, what we end up doing is that we find good-hearted individuals in the community. That want to bring in one of these individuals with disabilities and become their primary caregiver. And we pay them so that those individuals have a safe place to live. We also do homeless outreach and assistance. This primarily deals with individuals who have some kind of mental health diagnosis, intellectual disability, and/or an addiction. We do employment services, so we help individuals get back on their feet. And I want you to understand about our employment services. That ranges from individuals that are high school dropouts to people that have PhDs. We have individuals that are in our services that were lawyers whose family members passed away and they lost the need or the will to work. And we ended up building those individuals back up and then helping them get placement again back in the fields that they love. When we come to talking about reentry. CSBs focus primarily on your state and federal inmate reentry. So, the individuals that have the higher acuity for violence, those individuals that are rapists, murderers. That all transition back into the community. We try our best to intercept those individuals and give them the supports that they need so they don't become reoffenders. Domestic violence survivors. So, we work in partnership with people like the Trinity Center. So, when those individuals are notified and their protective order has now been placed. While we're doing temporary housing, they work with us to get permanent stable housing in a safe environment. So, those assailants can't find those individuals again. HIV testing and early intervention services. So, we test, individual becomes positive, we do immediate triage and counseling with that individual because their life has been changed and reshaped forever. And then lastly, we deal directly with suicidal and homicidal oddiations because we are one of referring agencies from GCal, which is the Georgia Crisis Line for 988. What do DBHDD contracts cover? Because this has been something that's been in question for a while and I'll just... DBHDD contracts cover uninsured Medicaid-eligible individuals. They do not cover the other 88% of the individuals that we see. So, it's never an issue of us being defunded by the Department of Behavioral Health. We service multiple groups of individuals and just this one group, which is the uninsured, the underinsured that we talk about now. Is just someone that is not covered in their, their layout of business. So, in essence, they also identify us as the public safety net, which we are responsible for being the follow-on support service for all of your other departments. So, i.e., individual comes... So, i.e., individual comes into the system through jail transitions. They look for us for housing support. They look for us for therapy. They look for us for medication. If an individual ages out of defects and they turn 19, we are contacted to see if we can help this individual who has no natural support system get placed or get housing immediately. We are the safety net. We back up all of the other departments. So if we do go away, it's going to make it a lot harder for all of those individuals to be able to do their jobs. So to give you a breakdown and understanding, what we did is just to show you a footprint of year-to-date who we service. So as you look and you see that state contracted service, those are your individuals that identify as indigent and do not make the median income to survive. So we gave out $10,464 of those services to individuals. Waiver now is developmental disabilities. So you see the percentage there of 5,000 services. Then you have Georgia Medicaid, and that's because we're not a Medicaid expansion state, so Georgia has its own form of Medicaid. And so now we're starting to talk about those individuals that are elderly and those that have full-blown disabilities. Okay? Then we go down, and you start to see Ambetter, Anthem, Aetna, United Healthcare, which are some of our veterans, so on and so forth. Now you start to see all of the people that use our services that consider themselves not able to meet their copays, but they know that we cannot turn anyone away regardless of their status. So as you see, that total number comes out to be 29,197 services year-to-date that we have provided for citizens of Douglas County. Not one group, but all. So what does that look like? To sum it all up with the changes in demand, the funding implications, the planning and policies, we have given out about $2.2 million in services without any way of getting that refunded because I will remind you, when you have a contract with an insurance carrier, the first question they ask for remittance, did that person meet their deductible? If you tell them no, they are not obligated to pay you. Some of the contract services that we have here in Douglas County. As we spoke about, one of the people spoke about us and how we impact homelessness. During COVID, when a lot of government offices shut down, we were asked by this Board to make sure that we provided a safety net of coverage for various individuals. So we had the Youth Innovation Center for kids that were going through serious emotional disturbance. That is not a program that is covered by the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities. We had the Family Resource Center, so individuals that were going through domestic violence issues had a safe place to come where they could get the wraparound services and supports that they need, but they were not in the elements. And then we had our Veterans Village. We didn't have time to wait on the Department of Veteran Services to relinquish money or funding. We took that as an initiative for us to make sure that we could take care of our individuals. And so we created these programs. And so through that, we started going out seeking additional grants. So the Youth Homeless Demonstration Grant is for kids, McKinney-Vento scale children that are going through homelessness without being mandated reported to their parents to be incarcerated or go over to defects. The Continuum of Care Stable Housing Initiative, that is for individuals that have some sort of mental health or addiction in their past that is documented because they seek treatment, and where we provide long-term stable housing. Now, mind you with this, we pay the rent and the utilities for these individuals because most of them cannot pass either the background check or they don't have the finances to come up with three times of the rent in their deposits, as well as all of the other requirements such as credit checks. Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities, that is a program that is covered by DBHDD. Indigent mental health care is covered by DBHDD. Veteran Suicide Prevention. We worked closely with the Department of Veteran Service and the Sergeant Fox Grant to go out and do outreach to make sure that we were helping and reaching out to our most vulnerable veterans who were going through stresses and anxieties. And then lastly, in 2021, the Screening Brief Intervention and Referral to Treatment opioid Grant is when we started going out immediately engaging with individuals that we knew were suffering from this disease. So with all of that said, one thing that I also want this Board to understand is that CSBs are job creators. Doctors are job creators. Housing programs are revenue generators for the community, and so I'll explain. Year-to-date, we've spent about over a million dollars in paying apartment complex owners rent, hotel stays for transitioning individuals. All of this goes into the digest in some form coming through the CSB. And pharmacy, your Genoas, your Rite Aid, your CVSs, your Walgreens, your Publix, Kroger, et cetera, they all benefit off of the prescriptions that our doctors write for the individuals that need the medications. And then lastly, employment support. Out of our 85 individuals that are employed full-time here in Douglas County, all 85 work in the county limit. And these individuals range from being warehouse workers at Amazon to actually being registered nurses on Wellstar staff. Total revenue year-to-date we've put into this community is 4.8 million because the majority of our revenue is passed through. So, what the community needs to know. We are only considered a contractor to the state of Georgia. But if they decide that we need to realign with someone, the funding that they have allocated to the CSB can move to over 25 different counties in Georgia. And I listed those counties that fall within our region. Housing grants. Housing grants can't be transferred. So what happens with those housing grants is they're turned back over to the federal government, who now depicts who passed and qualified for that grant and also can get the supplemental funding. And lastly, our assets. All of our assets that are here in Douglas County, which are the houses that we own, that we place people immediately in, our vehicles, our facilities, all become assets of the new incumbent CSB to do what they please. And so just to understand what's at stake so everyone knows that the footprint would disappear if it's not profitable. And so at this point now, I will turn it over to my clinical compliance officer, Sandra Williams, and she'll discuss a little bit with you.
Good morning Commissioners. I'm Sandra Williams. I'm the Clinical Compliance Officer for One Community Health Solution. And so as you can see from this slide, merging with another county will mean fewer services, longer wait times, and less support for the families and individuals in this county. So pretty much basically, Douglas County is at risk of losing local control and influence over the programs and services that we currently offer and tailor specifically for our Douglas County residents. As Ray was saying earlier, another county can come in and they can deem our services as redundant, meaning they offer that services at their centralized location, which is in another county. So they can come to Douglas County and say, this county doesn't need the services. It's now being moved to XYZ County. By doing that, if you eliminate a county in, I mean, a program in a county, you also eliminate the workforce that comes with that program and services. Majority of our staff at the CSB do live here in Douglas County, which also puts the county at the risk of increased unemployment rate. In addition to that, how would our residents get to that additional county without transportation? A lot of the residents that we serve here, they have transportation issues internally within the county, and the CSB does assist with that, not just to mental health appointments, but also their medical appointments as well. So now you're running into longer wait times because now Douglas County is in a larger pool of population competing with another county, possibly five other counties, for resources and services, but with fewer providers. Currently, right now, we have three psychiatrists who are on our staff who understands how dementia, seizures, high blood pressure, diabetes all correlate with mental health. So they understand when they prescribe their medical medication not to let it counteract with their psychotropic medications as well. So now that we've talked about and we have seen what risk we are potentially in and what services we're losing, I do think it is important that we recognize what is already currently working in this county. And right now, that is the relationship between the CSB and public health. So Department and Public Health and the CSB, we are two agencies that serve different purposes, but together we help the community thrive. Department and Public Health and the CSBs are parallel public systems that work together but are governed independently. We are both essential components of a healthy and functional community. We address different but complementary needs. Public health focuses on physical and public health like disease prevention, vaccines, environmental food-water safety, whereas the CSB focuses on mental health, substance use, and developmental disabilities such as counseling, treatment, and crisis support. But together, your CSB and your Department of Public Health creates a full picture of health, the mind and the body, for the betterment of the community. So as you can see, the CSB does play a vital role alongside with public health to ensure holistic and well-being in Douglas County. But collaboration is only as effective as the quality of services being delivered. So over these next two slides, you will see our clinical audit scores over the past two years. Now, according to the state and per their policy, we have never failed an audit. However, we have received low billing scores. Our low billing scores is not due to how you would think billing would do to. It is not due to submitting a claim and not getting paid, as many people would think that's what billing is. Our scores are due to, for example, a provider who signs their note two minutes before the end of the session, or a staff member who overlooks an online training and doesn't meet the training within a required timeframe. Or a potential, well, not client, staff who does the background check with DBHDD. They received a letter that they're eligible to work, but we didn't have access to receive that letter to upload to their staff files. These are the little minute things that contributes to a deduction in our audit scores and goes, contributes also to our billing scores, which also goes to our overall audit scores. So our clinical audits are not a reflection of the services that we provide to our clients. It is not a failure in service, but it's a challenge in navigating a system that is overly focused on documentation and administrative compliance. A system that doesn't capture the full work and life-changing work that our staff does every day in real time. And this isn't just Douglas County experience. Across the Board, all of my fellow clinical leaders are experiencing the same barriers and challenges with audits. But together, we are actively advocating for system-wide changes. We want changes that is going to prioritize client outcomes over paperwork and prioritize professional judgment of the providers who are providing the services on the ground. So, do we always get it right? Absolutely not. We don't. None of us do because none of us is perfect. But what we can promise you, and what we have always promised you, is that the CSB will show up every single day with heart, with grit, with an unshakable commitment to this community and its residents. We are here for the single parent who is barely holding on, for the veteran who's just trying to find peace, for the youthful individual who's just trying to understand why does this world feel so heavy. We're here, not because it's easy, but because it matters. So we are asking for partnership. We are asking for realignment. We are asking for each of you to bring the same level of dedication that we are bringing for the people who elected you in these positions. We are asking for you to fight with us, to fight for our residents' well-being, their dignity, and their wholeness. Because at the end of the day, it's not about budgets, it's not about programs, it's about people. And our residents are the ones who are counted on all of us. Thank you for your time, and I'll turn it over to Patricia Henry, our CFO.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair. I'm Patricia Henry, the CFO of Douglas County Community Services Board. We heard all the good background and the services we provide. I will cover mainly the financial impact and what we do. As you may or may not know, the CSB is a quasi-governmental entity. What that means, we can partner, contract with, and serve with different levels of government entities. And we have different categories. We have two main categories of funding, restricted and unrestricted. This restricted funds for fiscal year 2025, a total of $4.8 million. What that means is we are restricted, or we can't serve but certain services. We can provide certain services. We can serve certain individuals. In some cases, we can only serve in certain locations or areas. But that ties our hands on what we can do, and other services that are needed in the community are not funded. So on that flip side, that is our unrestricted funds. As you can see, those unrestricted funds are a mere $545,000. Not very much to cover personnel costs, benefits, other operating costs, or the other services I just mentioned. However, we can spend it on whatever we want, but it's not enough. Of those other services, here's a list of other services that is not covered. The emergency housing, clothing, food for residents, individuals, women fleeing from domestic violence. We get those calls in the middle of the night or after hours, and our staff or providers are there to serve them. We don't have funding for leasing for our wonderful One Family Resource Center or the Youth Innovation Center out in Litherer Springs. We have to come up with additional funds and creativity in how to service and keep those doors open. Our federal funding is what has been reduced and cut from prior year. Not funding from DBHDD. Those were, like you say, fake news. Those were fake facts. But here's the reality. Our federal funds were reduced for this year from prior year, $1.2 million. That was cutting in our medication assistance to individuals who really needed to stay stable through their life. The supported employment, those funds were cut. Residential services of the number of apartment complexes where we house individuals throughout the county. We have eight houses where we have to keep up, no funds, where we house families. These are the services that we have to worry about getting funded. A key point of recap. Our restricted funds make up 88% of our revenue budget. That only leaves 12% of all these other services and things we want to accomplish. The Affordable Care Act, where they changed it where, great thing to give other individuals who are indigent access to insurance, but as Ray was saying, they can't afford the high deductibles. In some cases, those deductibles are $2,000, $5,000. So they come back to the CSB and we provide those services. And when we submit the claims, of course, they're going to be denied by the state because these individuals have insurance. That's a total of $2.3 million a year. We have to also submit to the state 29.45% in the state health benefit plan. That averages about $600,000 to $750,000 a year. On top of that, we have to pay that percentage on our total salary budget, which includes staff who decide not to participate or don't want the health insurance, but we have to pay anyway. That's a total of $250,000 a year that they force us to pay into the system. No one wants to provide, say subsidize our rent. Everyone wants, oh, can you provide this services? Can you do this? Can you create this? But no one wants to pay the piper. Where are we going to do this? As Sandra said, we have the psychiatrists, the doctors, the therapists, the clinical staff, the case managers, who work diligently to provide service to the citizens, but no one wants to pay. But we care about the citizens, so we provide it anyway. We're unlike most CSBs. If they don't have the funds, then their people don't get services. But we care. We find the money. We find a way to provide the services. Now this slide, it's misleading and labeled as options, but it should be choices. Because at Douglas County CSB, we have choices. We choose to provide services to Douglas County residents. We choose to be here in Douglas County. We choose to partner with you, the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. We have relationships with the individuals here in the county. We have relationships with the other nonprofit small businesses here in Douglas County. We help them. They don't have the budget. They're so tight. They don't have office space to meet their clients. They're making, meeting at the local McDonald's or Burger King, where that's not a place to meet clients, to talk about personal intimate details of their lives. So, we offer them the One Family Resource Center. It's a safe place for them to go, a safe place to interact and combine and meet with their families again. Individuals coming out of jail, they can come there and meet quietly and confident that they won't be disturbed and they have privacy. That's what the CSB partner and does with our community. We have relationships. We have relationships with our clients. I'm not your typical CFO. I'm on call 24/7. Some of our directors and case managers, they're on call 24/7. We're not most entities. You might go to your favorite restaurant, they close at 10:00, 9:30, they start to shut down. Quarter till, they've locked the door, not us. We are open till 4:00, we close at 4:00 PM. But if someone comes knocking at that door at 4:15, we open the door, find out what they need, and serve them. We are there for them. So, Commissioners, we would just like to ask you to consider reforming the CSB as the Douglas County Behavioral Health Authority, a contracted public corporation. Keyword contracted. So you won't take on all our overheads, such as personnel costs, admin costs, benefits. No, you won't have that burden. We will cover that. What you will have, though, is control. Control on the type of services you want the citizens of Douglas County to have. You will have control in opening up and deciding what are the service gaps. You will come to us and say, hey, we think we need services for those individuals leaving foster care. They all need services coming out. You might want to have series of new programs for your senior citizens. You can come us, to us and let us know. We will find the funds. I will find the funds for that. We will provide those new programs for your senior citizens. But most of all, this new reformation will have services earmarked for the Douglas County citizens and residents. How we would do that? When individuals come to our facilities, they will have to prove that they are residents. They will have to provide a state ID, a Georgia driver's license with the Douglas County address. It could be a voter registration card, or their school documents with their kids' names, their names, and their address of where they live. This would be for everyone, even those who are able to pay. We will have a sliding fee scale, so no one will pay 100% of the services. And no one will be turned away, because you will have committed to the CSB, and that will be covered. So our request to you today, Commissioners, is to establish a Douglas County Behavioral Health Authority or contracted public corporation at a cost to operate of $4 million. That's it. So as you deliberate when you are in your session to vote yes or maybe no, consider, put a value, what's the value to your Douglas County residents' behavioral health and well-being? As you're considering whether you say yes and maybe no, consider and think about the promises and commitments you made to the citizens of Douglas County. Thank you very much, and that concludes the presentation from the Douglas County Community Services Board.
Thank you so much for the presentation this morning from our Community Service Board staff. I see Dr. Creighton broke away from jury duty. Would you like to just come up and say a few words, and certainly I'll open the floor to the board if they had questions? Good morning. You broke away.
Thank you, yes. And I do apologize for my somewhat casual appearance. I did get released from jury duty at 10:30. I do have to report tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock, though. I assume you've seen my video?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'm not going to reiterate all of that, except to say, reiterate that Douglas County is my home, so I care what happens to this county. It's my family's home as well, so this is deeply personal to me. As I mentioned in the video, I hope some of you were lucky enough to know Ron Wilson. Ron was a fellow board member on the CSB and a very passionate advocate for the CSB for some very personal reasons to him. And Ron identified these folks, their talent. And we've been very proud of being a fairly small county, but being one of the single-operated CSBs. And that's a testament to their work. I've seen when funding dried up, them reach out to other funding sources. So, you know, your biggest, when we broke away from Cobb, you know, any organization's biggest line item is personnel. So some of their solutions were to cut back on personnel, which meant contracting services. This team has been good about not doing that, reaching out to 911 to do some innovative services. Like I mentioned in my video, though, I am not a business person. I'm a clinician. I won't pretend to be a business person. So there's risk no matter what we do. But I can tell you, this team sincerely believes in their mission, and I am proud to be able to serve, serve as their board chairman. And I'm happy to answer any questions if I can.
Okay. Board of Commissioners, you have any questions this morning? Any questions? I see your head. Okay, Commissioner Braxton, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. And this is for Executive Director Langford. All right, good morning.
Good morning.
All right, so first thing I want to do is just kind of dispel some of the myths that's been promulgated out in the community about county or a lack of county funds being the reason that we're being brought here today and having this conversation. So will you please elaborate that and share what you shared with us during our Civics 101 course related to the county's budgeting and financial support?
Absolutely. So one of the things that we talk about is that, and it was kind of in the presentation, that this is the way ahead of where Georgia's moving. Georgia's identified that in order to create true parity and equity, they're going to have to condense the number of community services boards in Georgia. And by doing that, what they plan on doing is a couple of things. The first thing is also redistributing the amount of available psychiatrists, because most of them concentrate are in metro Atlanta. So they want to look at metro Atlanta communities now merging with possible rural communities in order to give those individuals access that may not have it, depending on where they live. One of the other things that we talk about, too, is that Georgia's not a Medicaid expansion state. So a lot of the additional funding that came down to like a California or a New York, Georgia never got access to that. So a lot of your social programs and services, such as peer support, are underfunded. A lot of development and disability programs are underfunded and things of that nature. So once again, it's about consolidating in order to make sure that they can touch as many Georgias as possible, because they're aware of that number being ranked 48 in the country. Now, the reverse of that is that, based on how the community sees fit, you have the power and control to adjust what you spend county contributions on. And I'll just give you a little bit of that. In 1994, in our inception, our county contribution was $200,000 in 1994. We're still at those levels now 30 years later. So that is something to be considered in the processing. But I hope I answered the question that, no, this is where Georgia is trying to move. And so what we have to do is either align with what's going to happen with Georgia or present to this board the opportunity and the power to be able to have your own self-contained behavioral health, such as a Fulton County, because that's what they did with their CSB. They made it a branch of government.
Okay, so again, it's not the county's funding that is causing a funding shortage for the Douglas CSB.
Okay, so let me correct that. The county initiatives are causing a shortage, because we're using the rest of our resources to maintain programs that were once funded by the county, and then when the reduction took place, we were asked to still keep them operable. Prime example, our Family Resource Center, when we got that, that was a 10-year lease that now we're stuck with. Our Youth Innovation Center was a seven-year lease that now we still are required to play, along with the staffing that came along with those programs, because they're not covered by anyone else. Our Veterans Village, we still cover the utilities for those individuals that are in the housing, plus any upkeeps and maintenance, such as HVAC when it goes out, so on and so forth. So it's a twofold question. So I don't know if it's saying that we were defunded, or we say that those programs are no longer getting a contribution to stay operable. I just want to make sure I don't do word salad and say the wrong thing. But our movement to going to a region is something that the state is looking at. So I think it's two questions, if I'm clear on it.
Okay, thank you. So I guess one of the things also, I would just want to confirm here, has the state indicated that they are closing the Douglas CSB?
So, so this will go back to our meeting that we had with the Commissioner of the Department of Labor. We are on a number list. So he has a few CSBs that he wants to look at prior to us, and then it will be us. So I will tell you that there is a concerted effort to merge single-county CSBs, and there are only five. So that's Douglas, Decap, Clayton, Fulton, which is now shifted to the Department of Behavioral and Development of Disabilities, and then you had Oconee, which actually closed down about a month and a half ago.
Okay, so, but to date?
We don't have a date, no.
Well, I'm saying as of today, we have not been informed that the Douglas CSB will be closing, based on the decision, because we're a single-county CSB?
Correct. So normally what happens in those situations, just so everybody's clear, it is a no-notice closure. There is no public notice closure. They make the determination, then they come into the CSB, and the first thing that they do is they remove the governing board, which now dissolves any relationship with that CSB and that community. I'm notified that exact same day, and then the transition starts to take place over about a month.
Okay. All right, let's go back to the presentation, and one of the things I wanted to do is go back to that first slide, the first slide that you had with the creation, and just understand the patience there, where we have patients with insurance and those that are uninsured. Is that correct? As far as?
Was it the first slide?
Yeah, it's the first slide.
Is it this one?
Yep, go back up, go back up, a little bit more. This is the first slide. That one, Dave?
Okay.
Thank you so much. So we talked about since 2024, that CSBs are considered no longer a state employer agency.
2014, yes.
2014. So since that time, how are salaries and personnel costs been funded in the payroll for the Douglas CSB?
Fee for service. Fee for service. No tax allocation from the state of Georgia or any other body goes toward our bottom lines. It's all the revenues that we generate, whether it be the 4% of a contractor grant. So prime example, if I get a million-dollar grant to provide a certain service, about 4% of that goes to admin overhead. And then there are always portions of it that pay for some auxiliary staff or adjunctive staff, such as case management, things of that nature. And so that's how we've operated, and that's why we've also did layered funding approaches to have so many different grants from so many different departments that we operate in. And so basically, we are majority grant-funded, and when those individuals do say they can make their co-pays and we can bill, we get that revenue to take care of our overhead.
Okay, all right, great. The next slide, in regards to the services provided, are there any other organizations in Douglas County that are providing similar or the same services?
Once again, that's a great question. So you do have some private healthcare providers, yes, and you do have some local nonprofits that do provide some of the similar services, such as outpatient therapies, peer support. I mean, you have a few of those, some psychological evaluations, you have those, yes. But if you ask it from the standpoint of it being free, complete services, you may have one or two organizations that have some type of grant they're operating off of to do so.
No, one, I'm sorry, one or two?
You may have one or two, and it'll be minimal, as far as the footprint of the traffic. You may have a single practice with eight therapists that's providing these services to, let's say, 10 people or something of that nature, but nothing to the magnitude of 10,000, no.
Okay. All right, when we talk about the uninsured claim of the 2.2 million, what type of collection services or process are we able to employ to go after those funds?
Right now, because of the state statute, we can't go after those funds, because those individuals did not meet their deductible, but we cannot turn people away.
So what I'm hearing you say is that that's a loss?
That's a loss.
So you're saying there's no way that there is no mechanism in place to go after that 2.2 million?
Correct, unless we are reformed to now reestablish our governing operations, so now that we can go after that. So those are just built-in write-offs. And that's once again, because when they changed us from being state employees and redefined us, they never changed that line that regardless of an individual's ability to pay. So that may be also changed by state legislation.
Okay. All right, can we go to the slide where we have the revenue generated for Douglas County year-to-date? And just wanted to confirm, like for the housing, are all of the housing units located in Douglas County?
Yes, 100%. And I would give you a list, but I have to do it in private, because it can become a HIPAA violation if I told you who all we complex with, or we have contracts with. But I will tell you that we have six independent apartment complexes that we have units in. Some ranging for as low as three units, some as great as 18 to 20 units.
Okay, all right.
And we're on the lease, by the way, not the individual client. We're on the leases.
Okay. And then you mentioned that you have 85 full-time employees. How many part-time employees do you have?
Okay, so with supportive employment, that program, we only seek full-time employment for those individuals. Now with the IDD population, there are some Medicaid restrictions, so I would tell you in the IDD group, we probably have two part-time positions. And that's based on their lifestyle and what other follow-on services they need and support. But mental health, 100% of our individuals are full-time employees, and that's how we get that median average of 30K annually.
Okay. And would you say the majority of the employees are residents of Douglas County?
100% of them are.
100% of the 85?
Of the 85 individuals, yes.
Are residents of Douglas County?
Are residents of Douglas County.
Okay. All right. So one of the things that I also wanted to see on the next slide, there, where we talk about federal grants, and some of the funds that you show, those are year-to-date for 2025. Do you have a comparison for full year for '23 and '24, just so we can see a trend?
For, you said the?
For the grants, yeah, for the federal grants awarded in '23 and '24.
Okay, was that on Patricia's slide, or was that my slide?
Yeah, and I did see it on the slide there, and I guess that's, I'm just trying to get a comparison, just so.
Gotcha. We can, we can.
See a trend analysis.
Yeah, so we can send that. The issue is that we did not break it down that way. We did year, date, point, and times. And so what we'd have to do is we'd have to go back and actually pull our grant contracts and then submit them to the board, so you all can see exactly the full value of each one. Because as far as the projections, based on the current trends of cuts, we estimate that we'll probably lose about 15 to 20% in some of those grants, especially those that are revolved around social services and those that come directly from Medicaid. Because as you know, right now, Medicaid is being redefined as far as who's eligible. And so with that, you're going to have some people with maybe anxiety or depression that now will come off those roles. And so it's kind of hard, because I'm waiting on the federal government to let us know what they're looking at. But I will tell you that this time last year on the SAMSSA website, there was probably 55 grants that were there posted for the fiscal year for mental health, and today there are probably 15.
Okay. All right, in regards to the evaluations that you mentioned, do we have any figures for 2025? What are some of the assessment scores in '25? The last one we have is dated as of 6/21/24.
Yes, so we have asked for a deferment because of what Sandra was speaking about, and so we have not been audited with the assessment for two reasons. We found that there were some bugs in our electronic health record that now were impacting some of our billing scores, and so we had to actually change the complete health record out. So we're actually working directly with the Department of Behavioral Health and Development of Disabilities, because what they're doing is called a bridge. And so if you understand about how one system, a mental health system, talks to a revenue-generating system, that's what we're actually doing right now with the state. Once the state has verified that the bridge is correct, then they will set up an audit date for us.
Okay, and when do we have an ETA when that will occur?
It's not in our hands right now, so I'd say we are about 88 to 92% complete, because we are receiving a lot of the billing from the state right now. But I know that they'll tell you that there are still some things to work out.
Okay, all right. And then in regards to the, you showed the revenue, but do you have an expense? So we can see, what is the revenue versus the expense, based on the financials?
Absolutely. So I know for a fact that Patricia brought with us our audited financials for public record as well, because we didn't know, when they said we're failing audits, was it the financial or was it the clinical? So we can support you with that now to be able to review as a board, but we also can give you everything year-to-date upon request.
Okay. Yeah, it'd be good to see a comparison of revenue versus expenses, and I mean, I don't know if you have that.
We'll leave that information with the board, so they can have it. Not right now, because we, okay, yes.
Okay, great. And then another question, and I know we've talked about this in the past, in regards to other municipalities that are utilizing the services in addition to Douglas County. Are there conversations that's occurring with the School Board of Douglas County, the City of Villa Rica, City of Astell, and the City of Douglasville?
So honestly, there are not conversations with that, because of the inception of CSBs where agreements made with county bodies. And so they always defer back to the county, and that's been happening for years. So that's where we are with that.
Okay. All right, I think those are all the questions that I had. Madam Chair, you have the floor back to you.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Braxton. If you could, just a second, Ray, if you could explain to the board how the board, the Board of Commissioners, were forward-thinking back in the 1990s, and what they did to make sure that the community, actually, they're, I say they gave birth to CSB in this county?
Absolutely. So in 1994, the State General Assembly reached out to various communities to see who wanted to invest long-term in behavioral health. And the communities that opted in, whether they could do it singularly or they had to merge together, created 29 bodies. Douglas County happened to be one of the single counties that opted in. An overwhelming majority of other counties had to partner up together to create. up together to create CSBs, which is why you have the footprint today of certain CSBs being thirteen counties big and others being just one. It was basically where did you forecast the needs for your communities to be? And so, the Douglas County Board of Commissioners at the time said that we know that there's going to be a time that we're going to have to divorce or, or separate from Cobb County. So, we want to reserve the right to have our own commu- community services board at any given time. And so, that was what was enacted in two thousand and eighteen because you have to remember when this started, Cobb County had a hundred and thirty thousand citizens and Douglas County had twenty-eight thousand citizens. So, as we fast forward and now they're well over seven hundred thousand and we're now climbing, getting close to two hundred thousand, there has to be a new look in retrospect. But the same entity that, how Cobb Douglas Public Health was created was the exact same for Douglas and we shared the same full board for thirty years.
Okay. Any other questions forward? Okay. Madam Chair, you have the floor.
Okay. Um, in the nineties when I graduated, I think we had like seventy-four thousand in Anna County. Um, all right. So, I just, how, how does the state decide which CSB they're gonna close? What are they looking at? Because you said right now you're, you're on that list and they, they got eyes on another one. So, what does it determine what CSBs?
So, there are a few things they can look at, right? So, so, one of the things they're gonna look at is total overall scoring based on, and just so everyone understands, that audit that we're speaking of is only for Medicaid eligible individuals. That is not a, a inspection of all the people that we serve. They don't look at those. So, they look at the scoring as far as your overall rate with the ASO or Beacon, um, health options is one. Two, they look at, um, your, uh, financial standing, how many days of cash on hand do you have, so on and so forth. And then, three, they also look at the total number of indigent people that you serve. So, when they look at that, they have the, um, the power to make a determination based on level of need to other communities. That is why they made us public corporations because they always had the ability to shift our focus at any given time. Um, one great idea of this is, is that in twenty twenty-three, going into twenty twenty-four, they created House Bill ten thirteen. House Bill ten thirteen now identifies CSBs not only as public health, but public safety. And then they expected us to now move into supporting law enforcement, um, fire EMS and, and all of these other programs. And so, they continue to morph us and those that have the buy-in, like I'll, I'll tell you just personally, we have not been, um, approached for merger since twenty eighteen and the reason being is because of our layered funding approach. As you look at how our money is broken down, DVHDD is probably our third highest payer. And so, that's one of the things too. They also have to look at the diversified revenues that you bring in and from where because they would have to justify to seize all of your assets when they're not the chief or principal payer.
Okay. So, year-to-date, have you been told from the state or from federal, any money that's been given to you by the end that you're gonna be cut or reduced in the amount that you're gonna receive?
No, no. What we've been told is, is that we're looking at reorganizing CSBs in Georgia. Um, the financial conversation was never had. Um, it was, uh, basically a mute point at that time.
Okay. And just, how, how much do we pay in rent in regards to the Youth Innovation Center and also the Family One Resource Center?
Okay. I, I know it's.
Or not us. How much do you pay?
Right. So, just rent alone is well over six hundred and sixty thousand? Yes. Okay, I got you. I look at the reports. So, that's well over six hundred and sixty thousand in rent just for those buildings, not including utilities and not including staff and not including transportation for the individuals that use it.
Okay. Is that gonna be projected to still keep those centers, the Youth Innovation Center and the One Family Resource Center if the county decides to provide you with funding?
So, that would be a, um, point for the Board of Commissioners because if we are chosen to dissolve and realign, two things happen that are, well, the first thing is any accrued debt by the CSB goes away because you're reforming. The second thing would be is to look at budgetarily, what would you want us to look like once we dissolve because now we could turn those leases back over to those entities.
Okay. And I was, excuse me, I was just looking to here where the ask is four million dollars.
Yes.
I do believe it's come up in our conversations that it was being asked five point four.
Okay. So, I, I don't know where the five point four actually originated from, but the four million, what that is, is not only to sustain current operations, but that's also us expecting to lose the one point six from the state because we will become a local entity. And so, that's how we came up with that number. Um, and that also is staying at the footprint that we are right now with forty, uh, employees and not the sixty-five that we had previous to starting to downsize. So, that may be where the number variated from was what are our operating total number, which was sixty-five employees, but now we've decreased to forty.
Okay. And just a couple of points of, just for some clarification is, as Pat stated that if we do bring this in and this is made private, but yet we lost, I believe as you said, what, one point two million in regards to not being able to collect, people didn't pay co-pays and so forth?
That was two point two.
Two point two?
Yes.
Okay. How would you go after that money?
So, great, great question. So, now I would no longer be created under Title Thirty-seven and I would be created of, under a local ordinance that now could say that you are responsible for meeting your co-pays, so on and so forth. And so, then we would be able to bill. Um, and that would also be something that we would have in our kit bag because those revenues would come in then or we would not service the individual, um, based on, you know, the doctors having to first make an alter, alternative decision because of risk. But we would have that right to say, no, we don't serve you if you have insurance unless you meet either a sliding fee scale deductible or we go after those full revenues from those insurance companies. That would be something that this board would have the power in our creation to determine.
Okay. The reason I was thinking about that is because as we were giving this presentation, you stated that, you know, this is built in around about the community and this is about the people of the community and about the community. So, why would we turn our people away if, you know, and going after them and billing saying, all right, we're not gonna provide you with this service because you can't pay. But what if they can't afford that co-pay and we're gonna go after them? And then, so I see them basically turning away and not using the community service board.
Absolutely. And like I said, that's all about how we design it. So, the four million would cover the operational staff so that we wouldn't accrue a bill so we would not have to bill. But if we wanted additional revenue, you still have the power to turn that on as well. So, that'll be something for this board to make a determination. Do we want to service everyone regardless of their ability to pay and know that this is a baseline operating budget of four million dollars? Or do we want to seize those additional revenues and look as far as an opportunity, um, to, to generate more revenue for the, for the county? That's, that would be totally up to this board to make the determination. But the four million does cover every individual being seen without them having to pay that co-pays.
How many people outside of our county currently come to CSB to use their services?
Okay. Well, I always tell people this is a trick question, but I'll do my best to answer because, you know, our county lines are not very strict. Like you have a Douglasville address and live in Paulding County. So, I'll do my best. But I would estimate right now outside of the ten thousand, because these numbers are all Douglas County numbers, that on average, we probably serve somewhere around, uh, anywhere between eighteen thousand individuals to twenty-four thousand, depending on what's going on. And I would tell you that that additional, you know, eight thousand people will migrate in because that also includes family members, right? So, you have a loved one that comes in to visit you out of town and then they have a nervous breakdown or they have a run-in with law enforcement and then they come into our doors to service. And so, that's why I said that number is, is flexible. But I will tell you, that is only because we have a state contract that says I have to serve anybody that's a Georgian that makes me see those people.
Okay.
Cause their contracts are regional.
And I'm glad the young lady brought this up earlier is CFO, he's sitting down there. How much more would we look at possibly, would you ask us to increase our taxes? I know we're talking about five point, or fifteen point something, but how much more to, for us to encumber for more million dollars? How much more would we have to raise those taxes?
Well, based on.
Or can we, or do we have the funds to cover?
Yeah. So, based on the current policy, uh, of the, for the fiscal policy that the board has adopted, you will either need to find an additional revenue source or cut something at this point in time. Yeah, one mill is about seven and a half million dollars.
Okay. So, what do we look at possibly going up another half a mill?
If the board so chooses to do so, yes.
Okay. I'll go back, Madam Chair.
Any other questions forward? So, we can, okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Kenny Jones, you have the floor.
Um, first, thank you all for coming. Um, and I probably now have more questions than I did before you got here. Um, and I do appreciate the, the comment from Ms. Calvo, um, about the CSB not being a part of the proposed current increased mileage rate. Um, do you have any proposals or suggestions? What, where do you think that the four million dollars would come from in the current budget?
So, the, the first thing that I would look at is honestly looking at redundant services. Um, if I'm not mistaken, then I'm pretty sure some of the programs and departments here have behavioral health staff on them. Um, and those individuals could be part of the CSB staff. I, I know that you have certain courts that have contracts with Tanner, Willowbrook Hospital, um, also have mental health staff on their payrolls. Well, CSBs were designed to carry that burden for communities and for counties. That's just something that's never been revisited. Um, also, we would look at what are existing grants that we have right now and then are there grants that we can apply for at the county level that now would augment some of the services that we are providing because it gets a little stronger the higher up. Um, and so, those are just a, a few of the different, uh, suggestions and ideas that I would have. It's just basically looking at redundant services. You know, prime example, one of the things that we always deal with is that, you know, we may have somebody coming out of a certain service, then they say, oh, well, we sent our people to the CSB and they are not getting served over there. Well, you already paying for healthcare over here.
Are you aware, one of the consistent feedback points that we get from some of those accountability courts of why they are going and using Tanner or Recovery Unlimited, Highland Rivers is because the CSB has not been responsive when they've sent referrals for those services?
Absolutely. And I can address all of those things. So, the first thing is, is that Highland Rivers is one thousand employees and Highland Rivers gets multitudes of revenues from multiple counties. So, they have a lot more availability than we have. Um, one of the other things that we talk about is also our mandate by the state of Georgia. So, when a CSB services a person, we have a certain level of service criteria that we have to meet or we fail our audit. Well, if you ask me, is it clinically sound to have an individual in a program for twelve hours a day, eighteen hours a day, whatever it may be for eighteen months, I'll tell you, no. Because right now there are some socio-economical factors that are not being looked at for that individual to be well-rounded. There's probably some kind of financial exploitation that's taking place to where that individual's now having household issues because that is not a formulary to healthcare. We're supposed to work with you, getting on your feet, getting jobs in the most invasive or, or minimally invasive way possible. So, when I have a person that is in groups all day long and then I have this individual that has a need for a psychiatrist, things that, our doctors, we owe it to them to be able to follow up in a timely manner with individuals. This is something that we don't have an issue with when we deal with the state returning individuals or the federal. We have them one hundred percent. It is just when we start looking at how certain programs are, are governed locally because we're not being used as a behavioral health provider that should be providing the oversight.
Have you had conversations with those individuals and what does that partnership opportunity look like? Would they even be open to that?
I think it looks amazing. Um, Judge McLean and I spoke multiple times because he understood why and how we got here. To give the backstory, nineteen ninety-four, ninety-eight percent of Cobb Douglas CSB's responsibility was placed in Cobb County. Judge McLean had to create ad hoc programs from scratch without any support. It's just the, the notion has been that it continues to be the exact same way even though it changed. One of the things that we attempted to do was also to bring those programs into our facilities, to say, let's build them together. So, now we have oversight so nobody has to worry about transportation. That went on deaf ears. You know, so, we've had a multitude, um, with multiple people that have been in those positions. It just has not been enforced. You know, when you ask us about our rents and everything else and also space, we have the capacity to put some of that stuff in-house to where it makes sense because it's all together.
This question, I guess, is for administration. The one point two million dollars that keeps being addressed that was previously provided, was that ARPA funds or was that direct line item from the Douglas County budget from tax revenues?
That was a direct line item, Commissioner.
And how long was that line item in the budget?
I'm sorry?
How long was that line item in the budget?
I think it was only twenty twenty-three, I believe. That was the last, last year.
And what was the line item funding prior to twenty twenty-three?
If I recall, five hundred thousand from twenty-two.
I think it was six hundred and forty-eight after it was modified, but initially it was five hundred thousand, yes.
Initially it was five, yeah.
And how many years was that the?
Grant funds that were added to that in, during the COVID period.
How much, how much of it was grant funds?
Of the six hundred thou, five or six, that was the direct from the general fund.
Mm-hmm.
And then anything above that would have come from COVID, that, that COVID time period.
What's the CSB's current debt portfolio?
Uh, right now, we would be zero balanced just if we did not have the auxiliary programs. To be honest with you right now and in fact, I'll tell you, we're projecting probably a two million dollar loss this year.
And the auxiliary programs are the?
The Veterans Village, the One Family Resource Center and the Youth Innovation Center. And that number does include not only the, the buildings, brick and mortar, but also the staffing and utilities and things of that nature.
Have you all done any lobbying at this state level to get that, um, sentence removed so that you are not in the same pickle?
Uh, yes. So, I, I have reached out to state legislation. Matter of fact, I just had a meeting last week with one of our representatives to request that when they come back in session, that that is something that is addressed.
And so, I did, I pulled the legislation, um, Title Thirty-seven because I just wanted to make sure that I understood how you all were established. And one of the lines that sticks out to me, it says, "Each community services board shall be a public corporation and an instrumentality of the state, provided however that the liabilities, debt and obligations of a community service board shall not constitute liabilities, debts or obligations of the state or any county or municipal corporation and neither the state nor any county or municipal corporation shall be liable for any liability, debt or obligation of a community services board."
That is right.
So, with that language, what is your structure in the event that a county does what Douglas County has done and reduce the amount of funding that was in your line item so that you have a sustainable means of service provision?
Right. So, we attempted to do layered funding approaches, but in a situation like this, this is why you saw my first slide, say dissolution or merger. Because what happened is even though that no governing body has to be responsible for our debt, it doesn't keep them from creating our debt. It's not an even playing field. And so, in that, now we have to galvanize together because like I said, when leaders change or when policies change, we get the blunt impact of it because we're not considered those employees. But it does hurt our bottom line. And it also mentions that some of your most affluent, um, citizens are the ones that.
Did you tell anybody from the Board of Commissioners that that was going to create an ongoing debt for you all? What did those conversations look like?
So, great question. So, with that existing board, when it happened, we communicated about continued funding at a certain level for a certain amount of years. This is why we were able to take the risk to do it. Now, what happened, we had some changes, some things took place that nobody foresaw coming and there was a new philosophy that was adopted that stripped that away after we signed leases. And I will remind everybody, these were the things asked of us after everyone witnessed what happened during COVID. So, this was on the heels that these were things that we had to address and they didn't ne- never want to be in the same place again. We stepped up because of our relationship with the community. We had no idea that we were never going to be the same line number ever again. But we were asked to do something and that charge, we stepped up to the plate.
So, your board did not have a contingency plan in the event that that funding was taken away or conversations about how to dissolve additional services if you did not get funded at the same level?
No, we did not as far as the board having a conversation about that because we thought that this was something that the community wanted and that would be supported because they were all community-based initiatives, um, even the way they're designed. Each program is put in a specific district for a specific reason because that's what the people in that district wanted to be built there.
How many nonprofits operate out of this CSB?
Uh, so currently operating about fifty-eight nonprofits. Um, but then we also have quasi-governmental like, uh, Workforce Georgia.
And do they provide you with, um, any type of statements, revenue generation, um, any opportunities for them to assist in providing?
No.
Financing for those services?
No. What, what happens with most of our nonprofits, they depend on us to help them locate revenue. So, I, we look at opportunities to partner in forms of grants that support the overall missions. Um, that's what we do with them now. With ARC, they're a little different. They do, uh, provide, uh, rental assistance. Most of the nonprofits that are with us, just to clarify that, they cannot afford fifteen dollars a square foot for a commercial building. And so, everything they do is in kind and most of them that do have any kind of grant is probably no more than ten thousand dollars a year to operate completely off of. is probably no more than $10,000 a year to operate completely off of.
I did also pull the governor's budget report for the fiscal year of 2025 and going into 2026. And specifically in their Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, it appears that every single line item that is specifically for mental health services, for housing, for adults with developmental disabilities, for child and adolescents with addictive disease services, developmental disabilities, any forensic services, which I presume is like partnerships with like the Trinity Center, people that need those types of things. It appears that every line item is being increased in the state's budget. Is none of that funding trickling down to the CSB? Because the opening line of their budget is that "The Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities provides treatment and support services to people with mental illnesses and addictive diseases and support to people with developmental disabilities." DBHDD is operating five state regional hospitals and provides community-based services through 22 community services boards and various private providers, which obviously Douglas County CSB is a part of. So, if they have increased the funding in every single line item, are we not getting any of that money?
So, so once again, and this is just being for transparency, right? The state of Georgia does not do grant and aid. Each one of those line items that you see is for me to staff up to be reimbursed for the service provided. So, there's no additional revenues that you get without a cost. So, when we see that, the answer is no. We don't get that directly to a bottom line. And even when you refer to the forensics programs, those are focused on their hospitals and forensic peer, which those are individuals that go through the state of Georgia, most of which right now are their actual employees.
And we don't provide any of those services?
We do have a forensic peer that we just hired. And so we will be providing those services.
So, you'll get some funding for those services for that individual?
Well, no funding, but it will be fee for service. Right, reimbursed.
I'm trying to make it as simple as possible for the people who don't speak that same jargon.
Gotcha, reimbursable, yes, for that staff.
I just want to make one clarification. All those line items that you see in the Georgia budget, we are not guaranteed to receive that in our contracts because there are a number of, we're in discussions with DBHDD right now, where we were supposed to receive 70% of our state half benefit, but we'd get 0%, so it's not guaranteed that they will put those items in our contract.
And just add, they're all regional contracts.
When does the negotiation period for those contracts start? And when do you get your determination?
So, so they have not had negotiations to that extent since about 2015? We get our contract about the last week of June because our fiscal year starts July 1. And so then that's when we know what we're going to be dealing with at that time. But I just wanted to mention, those contracts are regional contracts. So, how it works is that we have three CSBs in Region 1. Any of those CSBs can be handpicked to provide those services. And so on paper, it shows that your region has those services. This is that difference between what a Highland Rivers offers versus a Douglas. And so when we start talking about full transparency, those are the underlying things that take place. That's 13 counties compared to one. They're going to make sure 13 counties get access to that service over one.
And so I see also from the Georgia Budget and Policy Institute for the fiscal year of 2026, specifically to the entities that provide intellectual and developmental disabilities, whether those are in-home communities, providers of community-based services, CSBs, or rehabilitative services, that they are expecting to increase reimbursements at a minimum of 4% to all of those entities. So, your reimbursement rate is going to increase?
For developmental disabilities, yes. And that took about a year and a half of lobbying to get that number to change, so yes.
But so you all will be the benefactor of that at some point?
Yes, because that's in their Medicaid guidelines for the state of Georgia. So, yes, we will get that.
So, now I do want to speak specifically about, I guess, the information from you all's meeting with DBHDD versus today. So, I did have the opportunity to speak with the Region 1 Director because I wanted to make sure that I had a clear understanding of what funding is being cut or not cut from this date. And they did mention, and I think you have clarified this, that there has not been an actual determination or a conversation that Douglas County will be voluntarily or involuntarily merged with any other CSB in the near future, that is not in the plans for 2025 or 2026.
Now, I can't speak of the timeline. I know that the Commissioner told us personally that we're in the meeting, that once he took care of a couple of situations, we would be the next CSB that he looked at. Now, the date, the time, and those things, I can't speak to that at all.
And so in the conversation, it's my understanding that the reason that Douglas County is one of the CSBs that they are looking at is not just because we are an individual county CSB, but because of the compliance and reporting issues.
Okay, so.
And I get the idea of we are here to serve the people, and that's the goal, and that's beautiful. But I have compliance obligations, whether I think they're tricky or fickle or whatever, that I'm required to meet. This board has obligations that they're required to meet, so it.
So, so I can clarify that, and I think Sandra tried to do a really good job of explaining that. So, in 2023, the state of Georgia changed their background contracted organization. We were told that we had to now get all of our people back in their new background and system. It just so happened that we had an audit at the same time. When that audit came through, our people weren't put into the new system. So, they said, any document that any one of our staff members did at that time was going to be a failed document, which means that that means you pay back what that person billed for that note. Now, it was never taught to us at that time that there was a waiver that a lot of CSBs were using because the region, let's say, the region person at that time did not reveal that to us. This is what we learned when Dante McKay, who you met with, came on board, which he would explain. That's why they say that it's not a mismanagement issue, there's not a systemic issue.
So, was that the same issue in 2023 and in 2024? And why wasn't it resolved between '23 and '24 in the next audit? It looked like the score was lower.
Dante came on in 2024. The person that was in charge never informed us that there was a waiver that we could have applied for. Dante showed up and then gave us new information. This is also why they're not coming back, because they realize why the score looked the way that it looks. So, this is something that DBHDD, I know, and even when we met with the Commissioner, he also stated that exact same thing, that.
So, but it sounds to me like once those issues are resolved, from a fiscal perspective, then Douglas County would not be similarly situated to the other single county CSBs because that appears to be y'all's only issue.
Okay, so.
Because when I look at the 2023 and 2024 reports directly from the state, only looking at what you all are turning in, in terms of what DBHDD provides reimbursement for and the funding that you get there, you all are finishing in the black each year. So, what is the actual funding issue or concern?
So, I'm gonna do my best to explain this, and I hope this touches you. When you have money in the black with DBHDD, that means that you're indigent and your Medicaid eligible go up in a community. Douglas County CSB strives to make sure people come through our services, they get jobs quick, and they get on their feet quick. So, we don't aspire to get a boatload of billing from DBHDD. What we actually try to do is to decrease the amount of people that are dependent on their service. Because what that shows is, and I'll give you a great example. Imagine if public health only got paid for how many HIV-positive people they saw that had no job. That's what you tell us when you say we're supposed to bill DBHDD at a certain level. We fight that and combat that. This is that part about the advocacy and understanding what the number really looks like when you understand what they're saying. We fight unemployment in Douglas County. We fight instability as far as housing in Douglas County. And so we want that number to be low. We don't want a large indigent population.
That was beautiful, but it didn't answer my question.
Okay, you can ask again.
I guess my concern is, how much do you actually need? Because I'm gonna be candid, I know that the rest of the Commissioners are probably gonna say, we do not have $4 million. We don't. I don't know where we would get it from without an additional quarter of a mil, half a mil. There's no pot of money that's just sitting there. So, I'm trying to identify, what is the actual need? Where is the shortfall? So that if there is a place that we can make up the deficit that we are focusing on those efforts versus just saying flat out no because we don't have $4 million?
So, the shortfall can be one of two things. It can be covering the programs that are localized programs so that we don't come out of our digest with that. Or it could be looking at the total number of failed claims for individuals who can't meet their copays, which is the 2.3. So, both of those are viable options to keep us shooting forward and going straight ahead. Now, the $4 million was, if you wanted to all be yours, what we could do. The thing that I can't do is that while I'm still contracted to the state, I can't close the gate to any other Georgian. But I can ensure that any Douglas County citizen that comes in, regardless of their insurance level, is covered. So, you have a few numbers. And like I said, we will morph and address outside of any contracts that we have, however this board sees us fit, which is feasible. But the issue is that currently, right now, with these long-term agreements that I have that I cannot break.
The leases, or is there extra agreements?
Yes, well, the leases, yes. That is going to bankrupt us because those are programs that are not supported by any of our federal or our state grants.
And you can't get federal or state grants to cover that cost?
Until I see one show up, which, you know, we were forward-thinking, right? So, sometimes it takes the federal government two or three years to catch up with what's happening locally. So, I would love to have Department of Veterans Service say, we want you to come on board and focus on veterans' housing. But now, what does that look like as far as the structure? And then how long before those revenues come down to support it? We could be reforming to a justice center or advocacy center up under domestic violence for the Family Resource Center. But once again, I can't guarantee those funds are going to be there right now because they all tie into BJA, they tie into SAMSA, and all of these people are cutting back. But I would love to have a alternate program, and I would still fight to find some kind of subsidy in the future. But we had less than one year when we developed and built these programs to now figure out how to sustain them.
And so that is, again, that's the $660,000 for the buildings and rent. And then what was the other?
And then it would also be the staffing and operational costs, utilities, things of that nature.
And if you went under Douglas County exclusively, you would no longer get the $2 million or whatever it is from DBHDD that they already provide you? Or are you still eligible for those funds?
So, we're still eligible for it, but we would be a Tier 2 provider and no longer a CSB. And so what we would have to do is petition as a body to still be included. This is what Fulton County did. Fulton County petitioned to be a Tier 2 provider under the umbrella when they dissolved their CSB and created their department. And DBHDD does support them with supplemental funding and allows them to bill certain bodies such as Medicaid. But that would be the negotiation with the Commissioner of DBHDD.
Is the build-out of those buildings, was that included in the cost?
So, so we had ARPA funds to build them out. And then we had county contribution to maintain them. So, that's how you got to that 2.4.
And so, but that's not an ongoing?
No, the 2.4, no, that's not an ongoing. It would be more around the 1.2 to 1.6 based on how we want it staffed. I also would mention, that would be 24-round-the-clock access. So, we would have someone, if we needed to make a warming center or we needed something to be a cooling center or station. And we just have to consider, how do we want to build it out and what does it look like?
So, was that included ever in the leases, the build-out costs?
Yeah, so.
Is that why the rent is so high?
No, that is the commercial rent rates right now in Douglas County. Right now, we're paying roughly $14 a square foot. And you've got one facility, which is the Family Resource Center, that I believe is 25,000 square feet. And then you have the outpatient side, which is 23,000 square feet as well. And the youth center is about 5,000, 6,000 square feet, somewhere in there.
So, what's the compliance going to look like for 2025? Are y'all still gonna be on the high-risk list, or has that been resolved?
Oh, no, we are confident that we have taken care of the one issue that we have, and we will be fine. We have nothing that is transparent to us right now at this point that's going to rock the boat because we identified the two issues that we had, and they were very clear-cut. Once we get the bridge together, we are rolling.
Madam Captain Attorney, did you have a question?
I didn't.
And is it correct also for the pharmaceutical funding that was cut, DBHDD gave you all an extra $30,000 to replace the federal funds that were lost for that?
So, I have been told that it's coming. My estimate, that it'll show up in the one October contract amendment for the next quarter. But yes, we did discuss that, that that had been completely removed. And while that's important, those are the monies that we use to offset people's costs who need medication assistance and they can't afford their medicines. And so once again, that's a pass-through. We will pay that out to supporting pharmacies.
And you said the only issue was the paperwork?
Yes, ma'am. Like I said, the background checks was one chief component, and then the bridge with the systems was the other chief issue. And then like Sandra mentioned, you're gonna have a staff that doesn't look at the clock right and signs a document realizing that the hour's not right, but those are one-offs. That's not every day.
So, what did you all do with the operating margins that you had when you were in the Black SD? In 2023, it was $360,000, and it was $230-some thousand in '24.
That's what used to offset the cost to keep those programs open until it went negative.
How far in the negative are you?
That's what we're estimating projections out to be about $2 million now because you're going from 2023 to 2025. And also remember, we're already in 2025 in our fiscal year, so we're actually almost getting to the point of halfway. So, that's two, well, almost three years of our revenues that have gone to the projects.
We have no further questions. Madam Chair, yield back.
Okay, thank you, Board. It's really, we're a little tight on time. I know you have the floor in just one second, Commissioner, then I'll give you the floor and then we're gonna wrap up.
I thought you were gonna deny me my rights to talk?
No, I didn't.
I was a little nervous there. I wanted to say hives are raised in the family.
Just say one thing, so when you finish, we're just wrapping up, Commissioner. Certainly, Board of Commissioners just wanted to be clear that regardless of what we do, merge or stay or whatever this board decides to do, I will say this, we can't get out the back door because whoever we merge with, we still will have to pay something in order to have our citizens receive services. That services may, it depends on whoever you have to pay to play. So, if we want to continue with $200,000 and another county in a 13-county region provide $2 million, you do the math. That's what we're gonna get. So, we're not gonna get out the back door on that, so I just want to make that very clear. And then also, in speaking with Commissioner Tanner, it's a business decision. I understand where the state is coming from. It's tight all over, not only at the state level, but the federal level as well. The DBD, I was shared, it was shared with me and Dr. Creighton, that the number, the footprint will be shrinking for CSBs from 22 CSBs to 12. So, of course, we had an opportunity to look and visit those sites, and it is not favorable for Douglas County. So, I just want to just make that clear. And then also, just also want to make it very clear that after looking at our budget, I believe there is some funding somewhere because I know Dr. Creighton would appreciate this. I know our Public Health Department was renovated in 2015, and I know we have $4 million baked in our general fund that's carved for renovation of our Public Health Department. And so there may be an opportunity for some re-appropriations if this board so chooses because it's $4 million sitting in there. And I'm so glad I did my due diligence, as I shared with the citizens of this county, that I would dig into those budget lines and look every, with a fine tooth comb, and look to see if there was some funding there. So, we in tough times, we have to make tough decisions. Some projects may have to be delayed, but to have a capital project of $4 million baked in the general fund is unacceptable. So, I believe.
Isn't that a feeling that the county owns, though, an asset that we are responsible for?
We are, but the folks that are in that building are state employees. So, I am, I hear some feedback, no talking. This is just the Board of Commissioners' police. So, that building is state employees, and I know it's a county-owned building. We renovated, the county renovated that building in 2014 or '15. You remember, Dr. Creighton, you were there when we cut the ribbon. And I was there, I wasn't elected, but I was there because I served on the DBHDD board and also was part of public health. So, I'm just asking this board if we could just think outside the box. I don't want to increase the mileage rate at all. That's not where I'm coming from. We are protecting the citizens of this county's behavioral health, mental health, and developmental disability. And I'm asking this board just to think, just, I know, just slow your jets. Let's just think about it because we have opportunities to continue to look at our budget. Let's just think about it because we have opportunities to continue to look at our budget as we go forward. But today is not about that, but they're just here presenting, and we're a little tight on time. And I'm gonna yield the floor to Commissioner Mitchell to allow him to close out so we can move on.
I like where you were going with that, though. So you, if I'm hearing you correctly, there are four million dollars that you found within public, the public.
No, within our general fund.
Oh, within our general fund budget that you found. Because I think if that's the case, it sounds like you found the solution. And probably, I don't know if anybody else would be, has been fully aware that there was this particular four million dollars, which is good.
Yeah, me and you weren't in office at the time, Commissioner, we're now. So I had an opportunity to look at the budget. It's in there, sitting.
Okay, okay. Well, okay, and I go with my, okay, thank you, thank you. And I, I'll continue with my Q and A. So my first question, though, didn't you guys apply for a fourteen-million-dollar grant some time ago? What's the status update on that, and is that a possibility to tie this into this to offset a four-million-dollar or five-million-dollar situation that we may be encountering or potentially encountering?
Absolutely. So, so we applied for the UBuild grant through HUD, and that was for us to build the independent living housing in Douglas County. Well, about a week and a half after the president was elected, he decreased that fourteen million dollars down to eight. Then it was decreased again down to six, and then it went from being ten awards to one per state. So we did not get the one-per-state award.
Okay, okay. I was just curious to know, kind of, where did it end up? Okay, so I guess that's out of the question now, then?
Yes.
Got it. And can you better explain to me so I can understand this tier-two provider versus a tier-one or another tier? Just get me to understand the tiers.
So sure. A tier-one provider is a, what they call a comprehensive provider, which means not only do you do routine outpatient, you do housing stability, you do substance use, addictions, you do all the levels of case management that they have offered, just an array of services, right? A comprehensive service. When you become a tier-two provider, you only contract certain services with the state. So one of the things that Fulton Behavior Health did, they contracted routine outpatient service and addiction services. They did not contract peer support. They didn't contract a lot of the other services that CSBs are mandated to provide as tier-one providers.
And that's, the state is okay with that type of a, a tier structure and from a county of our size and/or after we separated from Cobb to be basically a Douglas County Service Board?
Yeah, so we.
I'm just trying to make sure that is allowable, you know?
So the county has always reserved this option in Title thirty-two, thirty-seven. It'll, it'll state that a community services board can be reformed in a multitude of ways. It can be a public corporation. It can be a public agency. It actually can be at every or any echelon of government as well as it can go private.
Okay.
And so that's always been a reserve, and that was part of the agreement that the counties made with the state that if it ever got to a point, you could reshape it for your needs.
Understood. Now, I'm gonna kind of revisit and relive kind of how we got to this point. Because at one time, when we were Cobb Douglas, and then we eventually became, you know, Douglas, can you kind of relive that, that one moment? Now, the short story, because we, we're short on time. The short story of how we got here to the one point two, and then how, then I'm gonna get into the mere fact of kind of how the funds were, I don't like to use "defunded." He wasn't defunded. It was just, my peers, some of these guys were that, part of that, but they decided to kind of go in a different direction. And then we're gonna get to that two hundred thousand, and then we'll go from there, though, if you would please.
Absolutely. So two thousand and seventeen is the first year that comes up. So what happened is that County, Douglas County was given about two hundred thousand dollars a year to Cobb Douglas CSB combined. In that, you had one building that was located in Lithia Springs that had black mold running up the wall and green carpet. And you had a total of eight staff members that were your whole CSB. No one was able to get access. No one was getting services, and all of the appropriations that came to the state were one-sided. At that time, our board, Dr. Creighton included, and Ron Wilson he spoke of, and Madam Chair, said, we need to approach the Board of Commissioners and separate. And so when that took place, they realized that there had always existed a contract that had Douglas having its own community services board. And so we enacted it. And once we enacted that, we went out, we found real estate. At that time, the old ITT College was closing, and so we took over that facility. And then we began to operate independently. Within a year, we went from having eight employees to sixty-eight employees, and we had then generated around six and a half million dollars, which was the highest threshold of revenue a CSB had ever created in Douglas County. Before that, we were only getting a total of eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year for all-encompassing services. So we started to have continuing follow-up quarterly meetings with the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners, basically, were talking about spending less than two percent of their entire budget on social services and wanted to reform. The CSBs were considered to be integral in that rebound. So not only us, but also Public Health was looked at, along with Senior Services, and it was a whole array, a group of us that all got re-appropriations and adjustments. This is moving into two thousand and nineteen now when COVID hit. The CSB was mandated to stay open when a lot of the government agencies closed. So then they said, well, if the CSBs are open, we need to create some of these other programs because we're getting the phone calls. And that's when we were asked to step in and come to bat. And so the first thing that we built was the Veterans Village. The second was the Family Resource Center, and then we ended with the Youth Innovation Center because we had a lot of suicide audiations. In 2020, when this took place, we became the Georgia Provider of the Year that we presented the award with. We also had a decrease in suicides. We went to, to three suicides in a calendar year. In 2023, we went up. When we lost our funding, we went to having twenty-three suicides in Douglas County. So if I try to sum it up, I guess.
No, no, that, that, that's more than enough. That's more than enough. And, and what I was alluding to was trying to get to the numbers of when we separated from Cobb. Then we came up with the number, and then when we went from there, we increased to, we got to the number of one point two million dollars. But on our out-of-office hiatus, that, those funds were shifted and moved and, you know, not that it was defunded, but I think the directions were, went in different directions. That leadership was going in a different direction. But with that, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're asking that we would go back and look at the Sheriff's Department, look at the judicial side of things and the various programs, and trying to bring those funds back in to make this four million dollars potentially work? Because we're redundant. I'm going to the redundancy. Because there's no, there's no need to kind of do it, duplicate this and continue that, if I'm hearing you correctly.
Right. Well, well, I'm not personally asking to look at any one department, but what I would suggest is.
And I'm only using that as an example. That's, that's, that's just not where all the funding went. But I, I'm just trying to make sure I understand where we're trying to get to the four million dollars because right now, other than what Madam Chair stated, that there are some funds that are hidden in a mattress somewhere that we might have that, you know, I'm gonna, we're gonna look there to make sure they're there, but as you were saying.
Right. And, and what I am, am doing now, and just to be honest with you, I'm not asking for this board to look for any funding for us. My job is to inform you of what is going to happen, right? Doesn't matter if it's on the front end or the back end, but these individuals will more likely end up homeless and end up in your criminal justice systems. It's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. You're gonna have a bigger strain on D-FAX because they're gonna have more cases to be involved with. You're going to have a lot of individuals that there is no way or, or no shape or form of having some kind of help unless you create it. So what I'm saying is, is no matter if you look at us now, decide to invest in it, decide to let it go, you will have to ramp up the rest of your departments.
Absolutely.
In order to support it.
Yeah.
So the, the money's gonna be requested, and it's gonna have to be reshaped because what we're looking at now is social services, right? For the first time, how much do we put into social services, and who are the people that qualify for the social service? You know, and each, I think that each government has to look at that and come up with a number that they're comfortable with at some point in time. I'm not saying that it's gotta be to the CSB, but you need to really look at all the different services that the CSB supports. If we do go away, who is going to pick it up? Because our federal grants go away as well. So that means that these individuals that we house are homeless the day we dissolve. You don't have time because they're not gonna reallocate it to another body. So we have to think on those lines. I'm not here to ask you to burden the taxpayers. I'm not here to ask you to save the CSB. What I'm here to ask you is to think about the people who don't have a voice that you represent.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And I, and I truly understand that. But, but what this board has to have to do, though, is that they gotta kind of dig deep and either find these funds or adjust the budget, whether it's through a meal or court of a meal or whatever that is, to, to try and get there. Because I don't think not doing it is, is the, that's not solving the problem. So, because the, 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 the issues still exist. So either, as I always say, you pay on the front end, or you're gonna pay on the back end. It's your choice. Let me go to my other, my further other question. So you mentioned that with all the services that you guys provide, is there any way to break out to see what a Douglasville, Villarica, or even Cobb kind of, what, they're using this service by being in Douglas County. They're using and taking part in the services, which, not that they don't contribute because they're Douglas County, and so they are contributing to a degree. But are you able to break those numbers out so that, so that those, like, in the city and others can see, like, oh, wow? You know, and I use this example, like, I'm from Atlanta, northeast Atlanta, with Grady. And I use Grady, but there are folks that will come all the way from Alabama that will use Grady because of their, 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 their great service, even though they talk about hospital, like, you know. But I think the services that they provide, you, that's where you want to make sure that you, you will make it through if you get there. But you gotta get there, and they don't turn away anyone. So, but they, they, they're able to calibrate and calculate those individuals. And sometime I've noticed that Grady would even send that county or that, that, send them a bill in that county that, that they, they help some individuals outside of their, their normal Fulton County, I guess I would say. So how, are you guys able to do that, though?
Yeah, so, so we track every citizen that we serve by zip code. So I can actually even break it down to the point of districts. So as you can see, so if you wanted it even more robust than just the city, I can show you the districts of who uses our services.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so we, we actually have that because everyone has to fill out a profile sheet when they come in. So we have all of their information. So absolutely, I could present that to you. Also could show you how many kids under the age of seventeen are getting our services, so you would assume that they're in the school system somewhere. And then also, we, we also do coordinated entry for Department of Community Affairs. So we track every homeless person in the county real-time.
Okay.
So we also can show you that number, as well as sex offenders that are located in Douglas County.
Good, good stuff, good stuff. So let's say, worst-case scenario, that we're unable to find, this board is unable to find the potential four million dollars that I'm looking at here. And CSB stayed on the, on that two-hundred-thousand-dollar trajectory. What happens?
My job, then, because I know that, that number with the other fundings is not sustainable, my job would go out, like I am doing now, and try to find a community who, number one, is willing to keep a threshold of services in Douglas County at that contribution rate and try to maintain as many of our localized staffing as possible. That is what I'm doing now. And, and that's, that's how that works. So I'm trying to find a marriage, number one, in partner, where we're either the largest county or that we would have more seats at the table. Because also how this works is that when we do merge, based on your population dictates how many seats you have. This is where the shifts take place. So, i.e., if I went and partnered with Cobb County tomorrow, they're going to get eight seats, and Douglas County's gonna get one seat on that galvanized board.
So we'll be back where we were before.
You'll be right back where you are. So I have to not only look at where the resources are, where the funding is located, also geographically what fits, too. I'll even look at the point of, does our transportation mirror up with that transportation? Because I have to think about the person who may not be able to get to and fro.
Got it. Interesting, because I, I, I kind of see us going right back down that, that rabbit hole, as I would say, that we did before when we was with Cobb Douglas. And I, I also think that the state and from the big beautiful bill that started creating all of this uniqueness, and that is forcing regional approaches versus private approaches. Not that we, we can't or shouldn't do it, but I'm just, well, I don't think we can afford it because I'm still looking for the funding myself, you know. But, okay, so you mentioned, and I'm, I'm gonna leave this alone because I think all, all these guys had some great, you know, great questions, but you had some restricted funds and unrestricted funds, and services not. I mean, you, you got several categories that I just remember kind of jotting down a couple of notes about, though. How, how does that work when you're trying to, because it sounds to me like you need four million dollars to make it work? Whereas I think the best scenario that we'd drawn out before was about one point two. So we, we even off on that number. So, but now we, we've grown to be potentially a four-million-dollar operation.
Right. So, so four million is, is what we're looking at as far as expected debt and operating at a certain level. And, and just to explain, I think, and I always says, I love Commissioner Ratchett's talking about civics, but understanding appropriations. When you do appropriations for specific services or specific line numbers, it handicaps the organization. And what I'll explain to that, if someone says, well, hey, I want you to take this million dollars and build this program, but I don't want this to pay for staffing. It's the extra information that you put on it that now puts you in a bind. And so, because it still has to be operated by someone. And so when we talk about it, this is how we get restricted and unrestricted funds. So I may get a Department of Community Affairs contract for a million dollars to provide stable housing. Well, I only get forty thousand of that to actually create the case managers to go out and take care of these people. Now, that million dollars may take care of a hundred and sixty-five people, and now that case manager has that many people on one caseload. Doesn't make sense because sometimes we don't understand when we add that extra line, what it does to the organizations. All of our funding is like that because that became the status quo of governing from every level about six years ago.
But here's, here's what I'll say, though, I, I think, and I'm gonna leave this because I, I, I know we pressed on time. But just a thought, that we might want to break it out so that we can see. Yeah, each program, each line item, the cost of it, and we just decide on, we want more of veterans. We want more of homelessness, and that cost will be X. And try to work through it that way because all in is four million dollars. However, we might can only afford one point two, you know. And, and what that one point two looks like will be determined by what you bring and, and break it out so we can actually see strategically what that looks like. Not that we're gonna choose the best of the ten programs. But however, that may be all that we can kind of move forward with. That's just being the reality without saying to the citizens of Douglas County that your milage rate is gonna go up by a quarter or two meals or seven meals.
Yeah. I'm, I'm a citizen, too, so I, I totally get it.
Absolutely. We all are. We all live here. And I'm just trying to strategically find the, the best route. Not that either route is the best, but I gotta make sure that we understand what can, what we can afford. And that is, this is what we can afford, and it may be of the ten programs. And I'm using ten as a magical number, not that that's what it is. But which one of the tens that we really want to focus on and grow the rest?
Absolutely.
And make it work. And it may not be four million dollar. It may be one point two, or it may be five, you know, two hundred, where we are. And that means there had to be a lot of, a lot more adjustments to how you do what you do. And I'm not saying you gotta cut the staff, but staff may have to work uniquely. It may be that you can't have sixty-eight in the staff.
No, we went down to forty. So we, we've already, we've already.
You might be at forty now, but you might be at twenty tomorrow.
Right.
I don't know. We, we're just trying to make sure we, because I think it's important that we understand that this is community. This is, this is what our citizens truly need. And if not, we'll be taking them to the Taj Mahal jail that we'll be trying to house them there. But we still, will cost us that amount, potentially even more. So I'm not saying that's a good or a bad or an ugly, but it exists. So I would just say, if, if you could do for this board to break it out as such so we can all see exactly what it is and a cost factor associated with each, and then, because we gotta make a decision. And that's just what it is. So I'm gonna leave it there. Thank you. And, and let me just say this. You guys do a great job. I, I mean, you know, we talk all the time, and I, and I know the challenges. And I think it's great that what you guys do and what you guys provide to the citizens of Douglas County. The biggest of the question is, how do we fund it? And as we had, my colleagues and all of us had the conversation, you know, several weeks ago, it wasn't included. So let's get the misconception that it was or wasn't. It wasn't included in the number that we started from, the milage rate. It wasn't included. Now, if we wanted to include it, because this is what I said in the very, very beginning, if you want to include everything, I'm like you, all in, it's this milage rate. And be honest, if you want that, then this is the milage rate that we need to look at and consider as to how we move forward. But if you're not, you're at this milage rate, then you excluded that. And now we're trying to pitch the mere fact of, we want to include it, but are you, as a citizen, willing to understand that there's a cost associated with? but are you as a citizen willing to understand that there's a cost associated with this? And I think if we honest with the citizens of Douglas County and let them know that there's a cost of what I call doing business, then this is how we will approach it, though. So, great job. I don't mean to, you know, preach and, and go along with it, but great job with you guys doing what you guys provide. We just gotta figure out how to move forward with that. So at that point, Madam Chair, I'll yield.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Certainly, Board, wanted to yield the opportunity for you all to hear all sides this morning regarding the community service boards. So that's why we are kind of a little pushback on time, but it was, it was well worth it, and I appreciate everyone coming in. Thank you so much, Dr. Creighton, Ray, and certainly Sandra and Pat. Thank you all for being here, and we appreciate the presentation. Certainly, those core services are mental health, behavior health, substance abuse, and developmental disability are the core services. That is our purpose for existing. And I know you would echo those sentiments, Dr. Creighton, as we go forward. And that's all for that. So we're gonna move on. Clerk, first of all, Madam County Attorney, are we okay to keep moving? And you need to go into executive session now.
Based on a court deadline that we have today, I had anticipated that we would have the opportunity to go into executive session before noon. Because of that, I would ask the board to consider the one item, one of the many items that we need to discuss to take up now, so that I can respond to the judge in a timely manner.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I'm getting ready to call a motion. Uh, Board of Commissioners and citizens, we will have to go into emergency executive session. And if you could just bear with us, I know this has been a long meeting, but just bear with us. I promise, I'm gonna ask the vice chair to run it when we get back, because of my other event that's coming up. Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Madam Chair, I'm making a motion to go into executive sessions for items of litigation, cybersecurity, real estate, and personnel.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion board, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by raising the right hand. We have a 5-0 unanimous vote, and the motion carries. Commissioner Mitchell, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, he did. We have a 5-0 unanimous vote. I'll see you all upstairs. Please, we'll be right back.